Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Ipswich Central redevelopment Committee, the 19th of November 2020. I note that all members are in attendance, no apologies. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on this agenda? No? Okay, so if we move to item number one on the agenda, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Communications Engagement and Activation Monthly Report, which essentially speaks to the activation commencing on Saturday, the 28th of November, running through to the 20th of December. Can I call on the relevant council officer to come forward, please? Good afternoon, Mr Grant.
Good afternoon, councillor, and good afternoon to all of you. Alison Grant, engagement manager. So we have officially nine sleeps to go. We're down to counting down in sleeps in our team until we have the pleasure of activating the space, the incredible Tullma Place, and officially opening it to the community. And of course, that's going to kick off three, just over three weeks of activity for the community to come and explore, which is our tagline that we're using for the opening. The report that you have in front of you today is the first monthly report that we've put up. Given that it was created on the 4th of November, you know, we obviously have had a fair bit of activity in the last few weeks, which will then be presented in the next monthly report. For your information, in this report, we've just started out with a little bit of an FYI as to how we're approaching the communications, engagement and activation. So we've included the 12 pillars. So you'll see that month by month, we'll be reporting activity under those 12 pillars. We then go through in the report some highlights under each of those. So I might just quickly go through one or two of those under each of those headings. So the first being media and communications. Had some really great support from the local media, to the point where the new Glossy Magazine and Ipswich, Ipswich Local is going to put the precinct on their December front cover, which is fantastic. So yeah, we've been really thrilled and obviously working very closely with, you know, our extended peers over in the media team who have been doing a great job to help on that. Social media, which we'll touch on in a moment, has been incredible. The community is just desperate for this to happen and really supportive, which is great. So from an events perspective, yes, there's 27 events over 22 days. Most of those, as I said, have been very targeted to the community and to families. And we're very excited about everything that we've got scheduled. Lots of local entertainers, lots of local artists, food trucks, pop-up bars. So obviously, we have everything from the initial events being the Handmade Market Expo on opening day, who have been, I think, activating in the city for about 11 years, so have a lot of local storeholders and certainly a lot of loyal local followers who will be coming through to the food trucks the following weekend, and the many reasons we have to come and explore the precinct in the middle. Also, some school holiday activities in that last week. Just a bit of an FYI, we have included some information here on our approach to procurement and contracting, obviously understanding how important transparency is. Every month, we will give you a list of who we have engaged within this document, so that you can see, obviously, in this space, it's quite a fine balance between, we absolutely need to follow the procurement and focus on local, but we do have that role of curating. So very much is a case of us approaching different artists and entertainers and ensuring that we're following the right protocol and policy as we do that. So the procurement team has been a fantastic help, as have our own finance team for the project office on that front. Some highlights under leasing and asset support, certainly having Four Hearts, you know, our local brewing co popping up, and they're very excited about the space and about giving that new bar space a bit of a go. So yeah, we're looking forward to working with them. Marketing team has been brilliant supporting us on the advertising front and also, you know, on the marketing front. Signage, who knew that you would need so much signage in a precinct? So there's been a lot of work on that front and that will continue to evolve. We've been really blessed with the support that we've received out from our stakeholders within the community, and also the support we've had internally from our key council stakeholders. For example, the Ipswich Chamber of Commerce has been really great in promoting and sharing the information so far. Digital and online, that's very much the focus for how we're, you know, we're promoting these events and the take-up of our event pages has been fantastic. Council co-delivery, we've worked very hard to engage with all of our partners across council to see how we can support each other between now and December. Obviously, there's great synergies between what the art gallery will be doing, for example, what the Civic Centre's doing, and working with the economic development team to ensure we're getting out to all of the businesses with as many opportunities as we can for them to be involved in the precinct. So that's a bit of an overview of where we're at. You've all received the events calendar. Today, you'll also receive a brief, which will have some additional social media graphics for you, some more information and links, so that we can continue to attract as many people as possible to the opening of our amazing Stage Two.
Thank you, Ms Grant. Does anyone have any questions? No? Ms Grant, I'm just, obviously, a couple of, you know, the main recite I see and obviously highlighted in the report with so much activation going on in an open air space down there being storm and COVID. So council officers are satisfied? We've got enough procedures and policies in place to...
Absolutely. So the two major events are operated by a third party who are very experienced in this area, given that they operate events every weekend. So the COVID plan, you know, is under those two operators for those two big events. For all the other events, we have been consulting with West Morton Health and also seeking advice internally from our own subject matter experts. And it's certainly been a priority, right down to the fact that, you know, we're just ordering some really solid sanitizing stations that will be placed permanently throughout the precinct to make sure that the safety of the community is, you know, as at forefront of our minds as we continue to activate the space.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Can I ask for a mover for this report, please? Thank you, Councillor Johnic and a second, oh. Thank you, Councillor Milligan. Now open for discussion.
I love the nine sleeps to go, Deputy Mayor. This is one to highlight, it's great that so many local businesses have been approached for food trucks and the pop-up bar, which I think is exciting. I know you've been a big mover for that. And just to let people know too, that we're partnered with River 949 for the Be A Star, a local kid. River will pick a local child to turn on the water play. And I think the competition closes 5am tomorrow morning. So get on to River in their win area and pick up their menu on their website to nominate your child to turn on the water play.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no further discussion. I will put, sorry, councillor.
I just wanted to thank Ms Grant for her work.
Thank you. Here, here.
Absolutely. Never give up. Never give up, family.
That's a very exciting programme, I think.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, noting that it's unanimous and carried. Moving on to the second item on the agenda, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Executive Report, dated 2nd of November 2020. Can I call on the relevant council officer to come forward, please? Thank you, Mr Madigan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councillors. Sean Madigan, General Manager of Coordination and Performance. In summary, as we have with all the reports along the way, the project remains on track in terms of budget and timing. The Tullma Place, as we've just discussed, opening on the 28th. The works to the library are going well in terms of FFNE, so the bookshelves are in and the transition from existing library to the new library is occurring, and that's on track to open on the 5th of December, which is a separate event to the main opening of Tullma Place. The works to the building referred to as Eats are well underway, so that the facade and footpath of that will actually be finished by next weekend, so that when people are coming down from the top of Nicholas Street, they're not going through a construction site. The administration building remains on track. It is expected to reach practical completion in March of next year with a three-month fit-out for our furniture and the like. So that's progressing in accordance with the schedule and the budget. We are in the process at the moment, going through a tender evaluation for the FFNE, so all of the furniture to go into the building. It's a significant contract, and it's a work that's in progress with the evaluation panel and our procurement team to ensure that we're ready to commence fit-out in March of next year. The risks associated with the project as we progress are obviously being mitigated somewhat. We are using up a portion of the contingency budget as we progress through, predominantly on the administration building. That's as a result of just things like IT changes throughout the building that weren't anticipated in the original design. Things like that can add up pretty quickly over the course of eight floors of a building where you need to change a few wiring or connection points and designs. So we aren't expecting to exceed the budget in any way, so there's no intention at this stage to be coming back to this council and asking for more money in relation to the construction of the library administration building in the Civic Plaza, which was that first precinct. The retail project, as we said, we have committed to the facade and the works on Eats on the outside of it, just to get it ready for the opening. And we will sort of kick into the next phase of the project, which will be the construction stage of the retail assets, only once we achieve the condition precedent of having our anchor tenant locked in, which then gives us the trigger in accordance with council's resolution to provide the contract variation to Hutchinson Builders for those retail works. But all in all, for a project of this scale and scope, it is progressing well, and we are looking forward to seeing the community using the beautiful space that we've built for them.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. Does anybody have any questions?
No, after you, after you. Mr Madigan, it's pretty exciting, having with this for years, yes. I note in the page 22 of the report, they're looking at practical completion of the admin building by March 2021. Is that still on track?
Absolutely, that is, yes.
And that council staff are likely to start moving in in June 2021. Is that still on track?
It is, yes.
Okay. And then you've got replacement of lighting on levels B3 and B6 of the car park is imminent. How is, noting that this was written on the 4th of November, has it been done?
My understanding, that'll be done prior to the 28th of the opening. So we want our car park to be at a decent standard when the community come to use the space.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, any further questions? Thank you, Mr Madigan.
Just a comment.
Uh, so we might...
Just admin building, this app is wonderful.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, I probably should have mentioned, so the facade lighting on the admin building has progressed. So a lot of the community are actually seeing that. I'm aware of people pulling up in their cars and watching it. We've received some really positive comments from residents at Aspire about how lovely it is. It's like watching a TV. So the other night, there were people walking across it and the like. You know, I think that's a feature that has been really well received, you know, from the community, and they get a really good view of it, you know, from same areas and the like. So really positive, you know, that, that it does add to the ambiance, if you will, of the civic space.
Absolutely, agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask somebody to move this report? Please, thank you, Councillor Consulman and a second, oh. Thank you, Councillor Johnic. Open up for discussion.
I guess, Deputy Mayor, just confirming also on page 23, that the admin building being designated a green building under Council Australia, being awarded a five-star, a green star, design and as-built design review certified rating. I think it's wonderful. And I also note that this is the first council-owned building to achieve this certification rating. So I think it's a good step forward for us in being good environmental stewards.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And I know you and I both questioned what that actually meant when we got the information through. So delighted to hear that we are one of the first councils to achieve something like that, and look forward to incorporating any opportunities within our buildings to continue that very good rating process. Any further discussion? No. Put the matter to the vote, put the recommendations to the vote. All those in favour, confirm that that's unanimous and carried. Now move on to item number three, which is the Retail Subproject Steering Committee Report, dated October 2020. Can I call the relevant council officer forward? Thank you, Mr Hepburn.
Good afternoon, councillors. I'm James Hepburn, Chair of the Retail Subcommittee. And this report essentially doesn't bring any recommendations, just we look for it to be received and the content's noted. Over the last month, there've been two lines of work we've really been focused on. First actually was hopefully picked up by Ali Grant, dealing with place activation, and how we transition from being a civic developer into a commercial developer and place activator. I don't intend to go into that any further unless there's any questions perhaps at the end. I think that was very well covered. The second part is to do with the leasing and the commerciality of the scheme. As we're all aware, we are in ongoing negotiations with a number of prospective tenants. We have eight deals currently heads of terms agreed, of which six have had legal documentation released. There's been nothing to report from last month, predominantly for two reasons. One, we're still waiting on our anchor deal with the cinema to conclude, and I'll come back to that. And two, essentially, we're waiting for the place to be activated, for it to be somewhere that people can see is lively and and essentially, you know, a place where revenue can be driven and footfall and dwell time starts to take place. So we've got two of those dates coming up very soon now. Obviously, we've got the 28th of November leading into next year with all the activation. And we've got to the point with the cinema where all commercial terms are now agreed, and we're just into dotting the i's and crossing the t's on the legal documentation. So as stated in this report, we still are hopeful that we'll close this down before the end of November and be in a place to look at how we begin to push those other eight deals forwards, and then think about relaunching our marketing collateral and coming into a sort of hopefully post-COVID world next year, where we can get out into the industry and really bring people from all around Australia to see what we've achieved so far, and look to bring some very exciting tendencies in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Hepburn. Do we have any questions? Mr Hepburn, I'm just interested in relation to Bottle Alley and discussions with Queensland Rail regarding the fencing. I note, you know, it's on the agenda and, sorry, the Steering Committee minutes, and we've had productive conversations with QR, although are you suggesting that they'd prefer to keep the fence as is? Is that what it... Sorry, I understood that they were open to some changes.
I think, yes, they're definitely open to some changes. I think the main issue there is cost. We've actually engaged our quantity surveyor, Ryder Levitt Parknall, this week to look at a number of other options around the scheme, things we hadn't thought of or things we might want to do in the future. And Bottle Alley widening is one of them. So we'll get a, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll get a real idea of what the actual cost is to do that. And as it stands, I think our initial estimations, it will be quite high.
Oh, okay.
But Queensland Rail, I believe, are open, as long as we are fitting the bill and taking on all the risks related to the work.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions, Mr Hepburn?
I shall be asked, if I may, Mr Hepburn. Just looking at the minutes of the Steering Committee under item four, leasing update, there's inclusion of top-of-town, and I think it's actually Ms Grant would do teams to attend top-of-town businesses.
Yes. I think that...
Was that consultation or what was the...
I think that's, let me just, that's probably to do two things, partly to do with us activating, and in a sense, a way we've engaged with Four Hearts Brewery quite recently. And also noting that the way we're evolving our website, it's becoming a tool to attract all local businesses within Ipswich, and so that it is open for people to come and talk to us at any time, rather than it being a targeted leasing strategy per se, which is more so on the permanent...
What's the feedback been like from the top-of-town traders?
I think with Four Hearts is probably the best example, is that they were delighted to get in and start talking to us. I personally haven't been involved in many of the other ones, and I'd probably turn that question to Ali Grant.
We're actually planning a walk-through, hopefully tomorrow, if we get our print job, otherwise it will be Monday, to go and personally attend each of those businesses. We've also worked with the economic development team on an email that's gone out. So our goal is that by the middle of next week, we will actually have personally gone to each and every top-of-town face-to-face business to explain the opportunities, you know, for their business, as well as to provide them with collateral if they're interested in being involved in promoting.
Okay. Just for the record, because I know with live stream, they wouldn't have picked that up, but council office will ensure by the middle of next week, every top-of-town trader would have been visited and consulted. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we've discussed this previously, that there will be, the plan is to have an open line of permanent communication with our top-of-town traders, so that any opportunities available to them will certainly be conveyed to them, and equally, any feedback, positive or negative, just to keep that two-way communication open. And certainly, feedback I've received from businesses at the top of town is that if please keep them in mind when we are activating our space in the Nicholas Street Precinct, that if there can be an extension of the activities to the top of town, and we must never forget our bottom-of-town traders as well, and that, you know, maybe restaurants or some of the retail shops open after hours to complement what we've got going on down in the Nicholas Street Precinct. So, but I'm confident that our team, our Nicholas Street team are across that. So thank you. Thank you, Mr Hepburn.
Thank you.
Can I have a mover for this report, please? Thank you, Mayor. And a second, I thank you, Councillor Consulman. Now open for discussion. Anybody have, anything they'd like to add? No? Okay, we'll put the recommendation to accept the report to the vote. All those in favour, confirming it's unanimous and if carried. Moving on to item number four, which is designation of Nicholas Street Mall with the redevelopment of the Nicholas Street Precinct. The boundaries of the previous Ipswich City Mall are no longer accurate. It means that council cannot effectively manage and regulate the precincts, such as the ability to prohibit smoking and other activities. The report seeks a council resolution to approve the inclusion of a notation on the planning scheme zoning maps to properly define the areas of the proposed Ipswich Central Mall. Can I call on the relevant council officer, please? Thank you, Mr Madigan.
Sean Madigan, General Manager of Coordination and Performance. As the Chair has noted, this is the new Nicholas Street Mall that we're looking at here, incorporating Tullma Place. This report was prepared in consultation with our planning officers as to what is required in terms of regulating behaviour within the precinct. There are a couple of options available to the council to consider in relation to the actual boundaries, if you will, of the designated mall area. So as, purely from a development perspective, and in terms of the shared use of the site, there is an option to include the entire entirety, sorry, of Nicholas Street from Brisbane Street, incorporate Smokers Alley, Bottle Alley, Union Place and Tullma Place, and potentially all of the precinct around the administration building. That would then enable us to regulate the behaviour in terms of smoking and bicycles and the like in accordance with our current local laws. The other alternative is to only look at Tullma Place as a mall specifically, and then to look at regulating the other areas through the creation of additional smoke-free areas under the local laws, which is a whole other process that is entailed. Given that I'm not the expert in this space, I might ask perhaps Mr Tabullo, come in and perhaps speak to it and explain the different options that are available in terms of the planning scheme.
Thank you, Mr Tabullo.
Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services, Committee Chair and councillors, if I may, ask the manager of the meeting, I sent you some images just before. If you could pop them up, it might just be easier to see those. So maybe the other one first, if you wouldn't mind, Vicky. So councillors, that's basically a different interpretation of the image that's in your agenda with regard to the designation of the whole of the precinct as a mall, and would put in place the regulation to control activity... And would put in place the regulation to control activities across that whole area. When it comes to smoking, skateboarding, activities that council may want to regulate. The other image is picking up on the comments from Mr Madigan. With regard to limiting the area of the mall. You'll see on the right-hand side of the image is Tullma Place, fully enclosed. But what this subsequent image does show as a variation is that you could designate the footpath areas and the alleys still as mall. And control the relevant activities that you want regulated in those areas. Because bearing in mind that the way Nicholas Street and Union Place are to operate is 24/7, they will be an open road. And only closed at the time of events. And to designate the whole of the area as a mall and then have traffic through it is incongruous to the intent of a mall. Mall is for pedestrian, safe walking, free of cars going down there. But the intent of the precinct is to have it activated by the ability for cars to drive down there 24/7. If that's not council's intent, then you can go back to the other way. But you have to also put in some other different regulations to control when cars can go down there for servicing and the like. So that's the, that's the two options that are presented there. There's probably the third option, and that is remove the footpath areas under the mall designation and just go back to the plaza area as being the intended mall. And then you have to deal with the activities you want through through regulation by changing the local laws and introducing new subordinate local laws to deal with smoking, et cetera, et cetera. So apologies for the late arrival of those images. We're just working through some of the concepts this morning. Happy to take any questions on that.
Do we have any questions for Mr Tabullo? Thank you.
So have a bit of a question in which way. And so you'll have to move one or the other, be clear about it. Remembering, of course, that you've got another bite next week at the full council.
Yeah, so do we know?
No, what debate, good opportunity to.
Okay, all right. Could I have a mover for this report, please? Thank you, councillor Milligan. And a second, Al. Thank you, councillor Johnic. Now open for discussion.
My first one, it would have been nice to have the maps beforehand.
Uh, yes.
Because we've just seen them, we're seeing them for the very first time.
I guess the, my initial thinking, the key here is that the space has always been intended to be activated in a certain way. And that does potentially involve traffic, the option of having traffic moving through there. That's, that's always what was intended.
Yeah.
Does anyone have a view?
Could I just comment that you could always change it? So it's not though, if you make a position that says it's Tullma Place and the footpaths. It was to be the area they designate. If at some point in time, the council determined that we were going to have it as a mall more often. Close the traffic at, you know, certain, certain regular periods of time. Then you could make a decision at some point in the future to change that. So it's not, first thing is the decision of this committee is only of this committee, it needs to be considered by the full council. But the second is, it's not a final determination.
No, so the recommendation today was a council resolve to approve the inclusion of a notation on the planning scheming zoning. Planning scheme zoning maps to define the area of the proposed Nicholas Street Mall.
And that could go now, but at the ordinary committee meeting, you would need to determine the specific maps that you wanted to use, that's one alternative. Or the alternative is you could suggest to the full council meeting, one of those two options.
I guess I'm interested, obviously, safety and what it was originally designed for. The pros and cons of both, who do want to activate it? Does that mean it's best to have cars there or not? I wouldn't mind seeing.
Yeah, I would like to get a full understanding of when we activate it and there are cars, propose what those scenarios look like. So.
What you could do is you could move that motion and second, that further detail for the pros and cons of
I like that idea.
Of the two alternatives be provided for the council meeting, and then you can determine at the council meeting.
And through the Chair, I appreciate so that we can change the rules, but I think it'd be nice to start off in the way we intend to go. So there's not, to avoid confusion with.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to rush a decision on this one and limit opportunities or have to go through changes down the track.
And Deputy Mayor, I wouldn't mind even having views of Mr Hepburn's fuse on that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
On what the impact would be.
Okay, so we.
Yeah, we should say that that a report listing pros and cons of the proposed options, yeah, I think that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So.
Who was the mover in?
Councillor Milligan and councillor Johnic, do you agree with that proposed?
Yes.
Second in there, okay?
I did check.
All right, so we might put that to the vote then. All those in favour, confirming it's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number five, which is the CBD car park hours of operation and fee structure. Can I call on the relevant council officer, please, to come forward?
Thank you, Chair. Shaun Madigan, General Manager of Coordination and Performance. This report is the culmination of a previous report and then a councillor workshop in relation to the opening and operating hours of the car park located underneath Tullma Place within the Nicholas Street precinct. The proposal in terms of the community usage is fairly consistent with what it has been in the past. We are looking at extending the opening hours from 5.30am to 10pm at current to 5.30am to 11pm. That is to allow for the certainly future operations of that site when it comes to restaurants and a cinema offering and the like. We will still be able to hold it open later than that for special events and the like. So that is not, doesn't restrict us to that, but this would be the standard operating hours. Saturday and Sunday, as you see, is the same. The community has become used to, back in the old mall days, of the three hours of free parking within that car park. The intent based upon the expert advice and then the council workshops was to continue with that. So the first three hours are free. Then you have tariffs Monday to Friday. And then Saturday and Sunday remains free as well for people to come in and use the space. If I go down to the fee schedule, you'll see some price increases there. Not overly significant, what they are is consistent with the parking schedule for paid parking across the city. So it is designed, you know, for the community to be able to come and use it, it is consistent with other parking areas across council. And as you can see, not significant changes realistically there. But certainly brings it into line with the parking strategy that's been adopted across the entire CBD.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. Does anybody have any questions?
On page 68, we talk about the hours of operation. If we wanted to, I note that at the moment it's still proposing till 11, and obviously as more venues come on to put that later, is there a cost for opening up later?
Not in terms of the operations of the car park, there are in terms of security patrols. So it is the intent that the car park is continually, you know, patrolled by our security officers. Which ties into some subsequent reports to this committee with the community safety strategy. So you're looking at effectively an extra hour of operation for, I think, one security officer to walk around and close. Physically close the car park. That overall cost, I think Mr Waite would be able to provide a detail on to how that much that would be. But in terms of, you know, protecting the investment and the welfare of our community, I think it'd be a small price to pay for that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr Madigan. Can I have somebody move the recommendation, please? Thank you, Mayor Harding. Second, I thank you, councillor Milligan. Now open it up for discussion.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, whilst having a car park close at 11 o'clock on a Saturday, Sunday night's fine for me. I know with my three kids in their twenties, they probably wouldn't start to go out till 10 o'clock at night. So I think as things get as we get more entertainment and more dining in there, it'd be really great to see. It's good to see that there's going to be flexibility that we can open that up later to fit in with the needs of the clients and the customers and residents.
Absolutely. You know, as we start to activate the space and understand how our residents will use the space, it will become much clearer. Opening hours, not only of the car park, but of the precinct itself. I'm already fielding inquiries to have it from residents to extend the hours that we lock up. I think the gates to the Bradfield Bridge, for instance, so everyone's keen to get in there and enjoy it. And, yeah, so it will change as it needs to.
Okay, could I have a mover for this recommendation, please?
I've got it.
Oh, sorry, we do, we do, don't we? Okay, so nothing, no further comments? We'll put that to the vote. All those in favour, noting it's unanimous and it's carried. Moving on to item number six, which is the establishment of the Safe City Advisory Group. Can I ask the relevant officer to come forward? Mr Waite, thank you, noting you were looking at us as we're discussing opening hours and security requirements.
Welcome to the Mayor, councillors. Larry Waite, Community Safety and Innovations Manager. Take this report read. This report considers the creation of a Safe City Advisory Group similar to what was previously known as the Safe City Steering Committee. The purpose of the group is wide and varied, but pays particular attention to public safety issues and concern facing our community. It also shapes the development and continuation of the Safe City Programme, Public Safety Cameras and Security. Should this be endorsed, I propose that the relevant councillors and Safe City meet to discuss who will chair and who will be the permanent members of this group. Mindful that we can always invite participants and subject matter experts to that for particular meetings. But it's also mindful that this group not only discusses public safety concerns and issues with police, but assists in shaping the Safe City Programme, cameras and various technologies utilised in community safety, crime prevention and detection. Happy to take any questions and discuss further.
I just want to ask.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr Waite, just looking at the composition of this advisory group and noting that they will have access to at times confidential information. Each person, there will either be a councillor or councillor employee or from the police, is that correct? Okay, so and each, any of those groups have had police checks? I know certainly for councils, we had to have convictions and things like that.
Certainly for my team, they have, but.
Is there something else that councils should do, like a police check or something to make sure that they're?
Look, I think council's code of conduct may cover that and I'm prepared to look into it further if appropriate. And possibly in seek advice from police that will attend.
Certainly under the Local Government Act for Elected Representatives, if we breach confidentiality, it's sort of misconduct or corruption and, yeah, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and I share similar sorts of concerns and note that they were discussed recently during a meeting with the department and where there will be extended members involved or participating in relevant issues going forward. I think we discussed potentially the opportunity for subgroups or subcommittees. Where there wouldn't be sensitive or confidential information, but would equally give us the opportunity to get feedback or input potentially from members of the business community.
And through the Chair, Mr Waite, I would expect the need to know principle would apply. Just because someone has access to it, there's, people would only get to see it if they needed to see it.
Absolutely, and look, the manner is, even when discussing, I treat it confidential in the way we speak. And if we need to mention names or not, usually we don't. It's more to do with the real activities and events that are occurring in the space at the time. And what measures we need to take from both council's perspective as well, of course, from a policing perspective. So we talked about the number of incidences and offences, for example, for some things. And police may have a different perspective on that, they might say the cameras observe.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Mr Waite? Thank you.
My pleasure.
So noting that the recommendations are, A, that council endorse the creation of the Safe City Advisory Group. And B, that council determine the membership of the Safe City Advisory Group, as we've just discussed. Could I have a mover, please? Thank you, Mayor Harding. And a second, thank you, councillor Milligan. Now open it up for discussion.
I just think it's a great idea that we're doing this, Deputy Mayor. We've got a new CBD opening up and thank you for this initiative to make sure that that community safety is front and centre in this, in going forward for the CBD. Not just the CBD's precinct, but the entire CBD area.
Absolutely, and I think it's important to note that, you know, we heard loud and clear during most of our campaigns concerns expressed by residents and business owners, you know, in the wider Ipswich central area and even in our suburbs. So this is an important piece of work that can lead to a lot of other good work that we can do. So, but, you know, absolutely, this isn't just about protecting councils' investment down there. It's about the business people that have been keeping this town going for many, many years, so looking forward to the work.
And it was highlighted in Miss' report, the livability report as well, with safety concerns and security for our residents, so it is citywide.
Yeah, and, you know, I've really enjoyed, it's been very interesting being involved in the discussions so far with the Safe City guys and, you know, I acknowledge now that some of it is actually perception. I wasn't convinced at the start. I thought we had some more significant problems than we actually do. But so there is a big piece of education and letting our people know what is actually going on around the city and what's being done to make it a safe place, a livable place, so.
Okay, any further comments? We'll put it to the vote then. Oh. So.
Would the makeup of the committee be best done at ordinary meeting to enable other councillors?
So I do note, there's some councillors have expressed an interest that aren't actually a member of this committee, so.
Why don't you say the community safety action plan, the the members of the Safe City Advisory Group be selected at the ordinary meeting?
Recommendation reads that council determine the membership of the Safe City Advisory Group, so that.
Having to accept the structure that's proposed within the briefing, but the actual membership to be determined at the general, at the ordinary.
The November ordinary.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vicky. Mayor Harding and councillor Milligan, are you both happy with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll now put that to the vote. All those in agreement, note that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda, which is the Community Safety Strategy Action Plan for the Nicholas Street precinct. Can I ask the relevant council officer to come forward, please?
Can I ask the relevant council officer to come forward, please?
Larry Waite, Community Safety and Innovations Manager. Um, this report provides a framework and methodology to the Community Safety Action Plan that was presented to this committee October 15, 2020. The purpose of this plan is to establish current and potential issues, develop, develop and implement solutions through community development and engagement. This is a very comprehensive approach involving crime prevention through environmental design, stakeholder communications, in conjunction with current Safe City and security functions. This plan brings together a number of council areas, both directly and indirectly, and certainly involves community development and community engagement, working with the Safe, with Safe City to make visiting the Ipswich CBD a positive experience. Happy to take questions on this report.
Any questions for Mr Waite? No, thank you, thank you.
Pleasure.
Noting the recommendations, uh, A, that the Community Safety Strategy Action Plan be received and noted, and B, that the budget implications of the Community Safety Strategy Action Plan be received and noted. Could I have a mover, please? Thank you, councillor Kunselman, and a second, I thank you councillor Milligan. Now open it up for discussion. No, no comments. Okay, we'll put that to the vote, all those in favour, noting that it is unanimous therefore carried. And I think that brings our committee to conclusion. Meeting closing at.
1:17.
1:17, thank you.